All rise, ready to occasion please, Pastor. Give us your address and your... So in case we get lost, we can find ourselves.
Father Bill Gilmore, St. Mary's Episcopal Church, just up the street on Benita Beach Road, 9801. And Lord be with you. Dear Lord God, we thank you for all the blessings that we receive, both individually and as a community of Benita Springs. Be with us this evening as we discuss our town business. Provide us with guidance and show and help us share with kindness and love and work together to the common good of our community. Dear Lord God, through you all blessings flow. And you said that when we have peace together, we have peace in the world. So dear Lord God, show us kindness and grace this evening as we meet for this city council meeting. Amen.
Amen. We can pledge allegiance to the flag on three. One, two. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, undeniably, just as it is for all. About roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Councilmember Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any comments?
You did get...
Yep. Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Motion, Curry. Hello folks, welcome. And all you people are on the technology website watching us, you're welcome, you're part of this city. We're gonna do our business tonight, do it in the sunshine where everybody can see what we're talking about. Thank you for coming. Public comment on the agenda, do we have any public comments? Seeing none, we're moving along. Okay, eight, eight A. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any comment, motions?
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Second reading. Okay.
This is the continuation of the February 21st public hearing, second reading of an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter Four, Zoning, to amend Chapter Four, Article Five, Division Eleven, Subdivision Two, Downtown Form-Based Code, Section Four dash eight six six, creating an administrative variance process, to amend Chapter Four, Article Six, Division Seventeen, construction of fences, to adopt Chapter Four, Article Six, Division Forty-four, employee living facilities, creating property development regulations for employee living facilities, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, and modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing and an effective date.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Feegon with Community Development for the record. As you might recall from when we discussed this item at the previous meeting, there were some issues getting consensus on the employee housing or the employee living facilities portion of the proposed regulations. It didn't seem there were any issues with the first two parts, which were creating the administrative variance process for downtown and then amending the city's fence code. So with this green sheet, staff is recommending that with your guidance, you approve those two sections, the creation of the administrative variance and the amendments to the fence code, and allow staff and council time to have additional discussions to hash out some revised language for the employee living facilities.
Okay, can we make a motion to vote for one and two?
Very quickly, I...
Oh yeah, we have a public comment.
Yeah, a public comment, but I believe the question was, would you like to divide the votes and to move on different ones, and we can address that afterwards.
I think yes.
Why don't we hear the public comment, then we can...
Public comment? What was the motion again?
If you, if the motion would be to divide the question between the two components of this, and then we would, you would vote on each one independently, so the general...
There's three components.
There are three components, how many components you'd like to divide it into, if you want to include them? But Mayor, if you're making the motion to divide the question, then we would need it to be seconded, and then we would, you would take votes on each of the three portions.
Yeah, I'll make that motion, somebody second it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember, Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Which item would you like to take first? We have the fences, we have the construction.
Changes.
The variance process.
Fence code.
The fences.
No.
Form-based code.
Form-based.
There's fence, and then there's the employee living units.
Motion to approve the form-based code as amended.
Second.
And I just have a couple of questions, but I support it, so yes.
Any more comment? Roll call, please.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
We're gonna vote on the fence code.
Would you like to address Councilwoman Carr's questions real quick?
Thank you. So it says that a powder-coated and shielded matching hedges, I mean, what does that mean? Cause... Thank you, Mary.
It's rustproof.
Hello, Mary, so, Community Development. If you see those chain link fences that are covered in green or black, that's the powder coating. And then there will be a continuous visual hedge, so hedges, bushes, the height of the fence.
Okay, so it's, it's to perfect...
So you really won't see the fence if the hedges are there.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Just, just for clarification, you voted on the variance procedures to the form-based code, so those, those answers should help you with the next item, which is to vote on the fences. If there's a motion to approve, the fence code changes.
Motion to approve the amendments to the fences, walls, gates, and gatehouses.
Second.
Portion of the land development code.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
One question, Mary. So I can put up like a mesh fence behind the hedges, like in twine, like a...
No, we do not allow mesh inside of the, on the fence.
Nothing, no?
So the point is, if you can see through the fence, then you're supposed to have the hedges to block that, yes. So prior, we did not allow chain link fences within commercial areas, now we are allowing them, but you still will not see them because they will have the hedges.
But what if there's a place where there's no hedges and you can't put up a, what if there's already an existing security? I mean, it is security. It's not privacy, it's security. In my mind, when I see it, I'm, so you're not allowed, once it comes down, you can't replace it?
If there was something like a natural disaster and they showed that it was lawfully approved prior, then we can consider that. But if there is an applicant coming in to put up a new fence that's chain link in a commercial or industrial area, they would have to comply and have the hedges as well.
So they paint it green and then put hedges up behind it?
Green or black, yes, then hedges.
Thank you.
Okay, and I have a feeling the one with all the conversations is gonna be the employee housing.
No.
We're gonna postpone it to...
Well, if that's your, if that's your motion to...
Make a motion that we postpone it, so we work out some more details.
There has to be a second, if there's for discussion, second. Is there any discussion on the aisle?
Discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarity for everybody, what portion specifically detail-wise, like would you like to see worked on by staff? So they have clear direction and we know what we're pushing it off for?
Well, I don't, I don't think it's worth the trouble. I find it very socialistic. It makes you second-class citizen out of all these people. What if the company goes under and the people are stuck here in Benita with no job? I don't think it's, it'd be a significant impact on anything. I just don't like, it's more government, more oversight, more policing, more problems. I don't think it's making a big difference. And you don't have to let work in Benita. I mean, why do they, why do they drive thirty miles or whatever to work in Benita? You know, they, can't they find a job somewhere else, or do we pay too much? Or what, you know, I just, it's not a government function as far as, I mean, it's, it's free enterprise. If you want somebody to work, you pay them more or whatever, that's why I'm against it.
I would say so. And we all know, you know, I mean, I've never been shy with going to Benita Bay when it was appropriate. I don't think this is, I think part of the, we looked at this like holistically, like we're gonna change this for the city, but I think really what this was, if this would have, if we set the table right, would have been, this is a, a, this is a small change in order to allow Benita Bay to use their sales office for, for their employee housing. So the people who, we don't have to worry about the business going out of, out of the business going away, cause it's Benita Bay. So they're gonna be, they're gonna be just fine. But it allows them to get seasonal workers on the visa program who can come over here, stay on site. So it isn't a thing where we're trying to encourage it all over, this is specifically to address Benita Bay's needs in that sales office. And it's not a thing where if, you know, if they lose their job, now we're gonna have all these people down there? It's, these are people who are there, they're on a visa working specifically for Benita Bay, most of it'll be seasonal, and they come in with Benita Bay and they leave with Benita Bay, and they live on site. So it's, I think, when we initially got it explained to all of us, it was kinda like, we're gonna do this for the whole city, and it seemed problematic. This is really, it's a lot smaller, I think, than we looked at it initially, cause this is specifically for that project.
No, Mr. Mayor, if I may just add, I wanna make sure that we're historically where we are and procedurally where we are. Historically, there was a prior request by Benita Bay to allow this housing. That was approved by city council.
Amen.
After that, there was a discussion by city council, should we, should we look at this more holistically, as Councilman Purdon pointed out, for other properties in the city? The changes sort of incorporating what was done with Benita Bay were brought forth at your last meeting. There was some concern about whether this would, if I, if I recall correctly, if this would allow basically employee housing in other communities to be housed in Benita Springs, and so it was continued to discuss that. So right now, what you have is a motion to continue the approval of that section. If that motion fails, then you would still need a motion on whether to approve the existing, the code as proposed, or to deny it and go back and redraft it.
But to clarify, it does not affect the application previously approved for Benita Bay?
Okay, so this will not affect Benita Bay?
They have approval.
Okay, so on that note, we did ask staff to look into the potential ramifications of doing this on a more holistic level, and we didn't wanna be, you know, we didn't want, you know, the city of Esteros having all their staffing, you know, living in Benita by taking advantage of it, and we wanted to make sure we were doing it in a way that wasn't gonna be detrimental to the community. Do you think from a research standpoint, we've done enough of that?
If you'd like to hear from staff, maybe they can tell you what...
Could I ask my questions before we get a, then we could get a full staff, perhaps, if that's okay, Mayor? Presentation of issues?
I don't need to do a presentation, I just need to know if, if they feel, if they think we're protected, I'm okay, but if they feel like we're gonna be opening ourselves up to a position whereby people are gonna take advantage of it and use it against the city, not for the intended use, then I would like to know that. And then I would say, give them more time like the mayor said, and make sure we're protected, and then bring it back for discussion.
I think it's valuable to understand that if, if you're going to make a decision or direct staff otherwise on the language that's before you tonight, you probably wanna have the conversation about what that language is right now, so you know what you're voting to continue or not. And then, and then if you wish to deny it and send it back or approve it, you can make a subsequent vote after that.
I just, I can't approve four unrelated people sharing a bedroom and a bathroom, and who's gonna clean that bathroom? You got, you know, it's, I've seen temporary employee housing, and it's just a disaster, it's, it's, it's a horrible mess. Nobody's responsible for, oh, that's, if they have a refrigerator, and, oh, somebody ate my lunch, and it's a, I don't want my government involved with people's housing. That's my opinion, it's just, now, Benita Bay, their sales center is not in the Benita Bay. Now, if it was, if those people were sleeping in Benita Bay's property, I wouldn't approve of that either. I don't think they would either, because their people pay a lot of money to live behind that gate, and now they're gonna take these strangers and extended families, husbands and wives and kids all living together and with no, no responsibility, no ownership? Now, I, well, I was in a fraternity house at college, but we owned the fraternity house, and we answered to the other owners, the alumni, and we all answered to each others cause we had a joint ownership. But these people are just strangers off the street looking for a work. What they do after work, who knows what they do? I know what, you know, a lot of people do, but...
So John?
So...
Yes, sir.
I was just gonna say, do you feel we're adequately protected, or do we need more time, as the mayor insinuates?
We've done some research, and we have a couple of things we'd like to run by each of you.
Okay.
And, and kinda get your feelings on how it all lines up together, but in terms of where we are staff-wise, I think we're in a good place.
With that, I, I will support what the mayor said, and taking you a little bit more time so you can touch base with us individually.
Yes, sir.
So, that's all I've got then.
Councilwoman Carr's been...
So you're just walking away?
Sorry.
Hello. Okay, so my concern is, who is responsible? Is somebody vetting these people? So if we have strangers living together, hey, that's what happens when you work seasonal jobs. You know, look at, what is that show that they go on a yacht and they all live under deck, right? It gets crazy, they do crazy things, okay? But when you're at Benita Bay, these are longtime worker, they're known, and will there be a continued vetting of who's coming in? And then is there insurance if something happens, since it's actually technically not on Benita Bay's property per se? Is the city somehow responsible legally if somebody murders another person and...
No.
Yeah, but, you know, I mean, like...
Stop, stop, stop. Where are we going? Hey, stop, these, they're on visas, so they have to get approved by the US government to come here. They're here with the company that they're here.
And who vets that they actually have the visa?
The United States, the United States government. So you aren't allowed...
No, no, at Benita Bay.
Benita Bay, they hired them.
Benita Bay.
And, and the insurance and all that, none of that changes. These are still, these are...
There's nothing to do with Benita Bay.
Yes, they've had seasonal workers the entire time, so the process by which the federal government processes visas would not change in any way, shape, or form. So people, if they are bad actors, they aren't gonna get through in the visa process, and Benita Bay wouldn't be able to hire them.
And Benita Bay wouldn't hire them.
So that, that isn't really the issue, and I think we're kind of...
So what is it that we need to continue talking about? Since Benita Bay does...
You got four people, one car, that's not gonna work.
So when we...
Oh, wait, that's the other issue.
You got people who have cars, and you got four people with one unit, and only have one car, now are you gonna put the other three cars? I mean, there's a lot of things you could do.
If I could just remind the council that you've, you've in the past adopted rules that indicated that each council member can talk on an item two times before, before, before moving, before removing the question or asking for additional time?
I'll call the question.
Well, but you have other members who haven't spoken at all yet.
No, go ahead.
I just have one question, John, which was at the beginning. If we limit this to Benita Springs businesses, do we erase the problem of other municipalities or areas taking advantage of us?
I believe you, you limit that significantly, if not entirely.
Would staff suggest that that would be...
That was one of the, that would be one of the items we're gonna discuss with you. And so the initial draft said that the employee housing needed to be within a certain distance geographically of the business itself. That was not well-received, and the idea now is to change the employer-employee relationship to an employer within the city of Benita Springs and an employee that's based in Benita Springs. So that employer would need to have a job in Benita Springs with a Benita Springs employer.
And be a Benita Springs-based business.
I don't know if we really wanna go into those details, because if you have a larger corporation that has more than one office...
Totally why not.
Thank you.
Because if you have a business that's large enough to have employee housing, there's a good chance there's gonna be more than one office, and those offices may be outside of Benita Springs.
Lee Memorial would be an example.
But, but they actually have a physical local, I'm not saying the entire business, just that they have a physical plant, a campus here in Benita Springs, that's all I'm saying.
The current draft matches your statement.
Thank you.
And could we tweak the language instead of like being within a certain distance, that within a certain distance of getting public transportation, or having their own vehicle, motors, you know, little scooter, or ultra? Are they forbidden from calling ultra?
They are not, and so what we're looking at, several of the provisions that were written were based upon a close proximity to the business itself. So if you're within a short geographical distance, how you get there is, you have more options.
Within Benita Bay, that's great.
Correct, but if you, if your business is within two miles of the housing, two miles is not a great distance to cover, there's a number of ways to get there. If you start expanding that, there are things that we had waived within a certain distance that may have to be put back into requirements, parking standards, different things. If you're now ten miles away, the need for a car is greatly increased.
Fred, you got the floor.
Yeah, the, first of all, Benita Bay is the example of how to do it. When you leave Benita Bay and you go out in the city, you're, you need to make sure that, for example, Benita Bay has got a thing where they bring in people that are vetted and they're actually have a real green card and all that, and if they get in trouble here, they take the green card away and they can't come back for a season, I think it is. That's not, you guys don't, don't rely on what Benita Bay is doing. You wanna make sure the city, if these things go out in the city, that we have something like that. For example, we have got a bunch of people that are illegal, came across the border in the current wave, and they live in Benita Springs. And we don't have as many as other places have, but we got them. Now, who in the hell's gonna vet them? There is no vetting, so we, so that...
But we as a city can assist on that, but...
The onus, the onus is on the business.
It's on the city council, but we don't want, we don't want undocumented people living in public housing here. That's what I'm trying to say. Cause you don't have a vetting process right now.
Isn't that why we separated the two issues, so we could pass the Benita Bay and then come back and fine-tune?
Benita Bay's done.
Yeah, it's done, it's history.
Nothing to do with Benita Bay, this is the whole city we're working...
Mayor and Council, if I may, I think the staff's recommendation at this time is to postpone this discussion. I think we would like to come back and give you more in-depth presentation on what you have and the incentives you provide for affordable and attainable housing, as is now. And this, I think staff would tell you, is a tool in the toolbox to help that, and I think there's an opportunity to provide some more prescribed definitions and some more determination so that we're addressing Benita, Benita Springs businesses, and that you're having the full extent of, of addressing them, as whether it's their home office base or what definitions you'd like to look at that further. But I think it would be in the best interest of the council to have a presentation, so you're looking at everything holistically and all the tools that you have. So if you'd like to postpone this for right now, as far, as far as I understand from city, from Community Development, there is no other pressing issue or application in similar to Benita Bay. If there were to be in the interim, we would bring that forth to you to address in the interim, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't hold that up either.
Motion to approve?
Just to follow on, Fred said, I second the motion, but what Fred said, just to be clear, I don't want, I understand his concern, but at the same time, I don't want this to become a thing where we as a city are now focused on figuring out whether the businesses in Benita are appropriately following the federal hiring practices. We have a lot of stuff going on, that is the, that is on the onus of the business, that isn't our, that, it is not in our purview to start working on that, we have a lot of, we've, we've got a lot of stuff to work on, and that is on the business. That's not a liability we as a city need to be trying to take on, so just put that out.
I don't think that would be anything that Community Development would be suggesting that we address. That, this would just be the, and other incentives you have for affordable and attainable housing.
Employee housing.
And employee housing.
Okay, I just like, want a comment, that if you go down to 7/11 on Old 41 at seven or eight o'clock in the morning, five, six days a week, there's fifty people waiting and looking to find a job. Now, they must live in Benita Springs somehow. They don't need all this bureaucracy. They're living somewhere, they're working, they're standing there, trying to get work, they're day labors, God bless them, they're, they're trying to feed their family. We make, this makes us all too complicated, but bring, bring back something new to us, John, thank you.
Sir.
Can we vote on that?
Yes, that was your original motion, so...
Jesse seconded it.
Would, would, since I don't wanna motion, I have this go to a time certain, we'll just bring it back and we'll advertise it when we're ready to move forward.
Bring it back when they come up with something good.
Okay, this is a motion and a second to continue employee living facilities. Councilmember Folic?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Okay, moving along. Do we get any public comment on that? Our second, that's second reading, do we have a public comment?
You've already provided that, sir.
You already opened that up, sir. Now, you are on to your ear-based amendments.
Nine B. Shall I read the title block of the associated ordinance?
Yes, please.
For nine B?
Yes.
This is an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the City of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan as adopted by ordinance 2002-16 as amended, adopting the state required amendments based on the 2023 Evaluation and Appraisal Review so as to amend the preface, housing element, infrastructure element, intergovernmental coordination element, public schools, facilities element, and definitions to revise and update the existing goals, objectives, and policies and data and analysis in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At this time, I would ask Dr. Margaret Bannion to come forward with a presentation. If you will work through us, it's important that we go through this presentation as far as transparency and, and transmitting these items to the state and it is a public hearing. Additionally, after that, Jackie Jensen and Community Development would like to come up and give you a briefing on the additional findings of the LPA so that we provide transparency in that in the minutes as well.
Okay, yeah.
I may need some help pulling out. It should be the one in blue, in Mary.
There we are.
I'm assuming. Great.
So, all the way from Oregon.
Yes. And good to see everyone tonight and, and it's a pleasure to, to see you in person. So thank you for allowing me to do the presentation. This may, some members of the public and you may have seen this presentation before, but again, because it's a hearing, we want to make sure that we have full transparency for the public and for council in terms of the amendment. So the presentation covers both the state required and the optional amendments that are before you. So, and I understand that you'll have two separate votes for the state required and the optional, but I want to give you an overview of the work that was conducted. So as you, as you know, and as you remember, the amendments that are before you were a result of what we call the Evaluation and Appraisal Review. And that is a state required process, whether state requires that cities and counties look at their comprehensive plan every seven years to ensure that your plan is consistent with state statute. So that process ended April 1, or the deadline was April 1, 2023. There's a report that, that was filed and documented that the city has data analysis for that report. And the city also sent an EAR, EAR notification letter to the state saying that there were changes that were required to be consistent with state law. So that was, that deadline was April 1, 2023. You finished that. And then the state also provides a one-year timeframe to make those state required changes. So that deadline is coming up April 1, 2024, and these amendments meet those statutory So just a little timeline for you to look at. This process started with the Evaluation and Appraisal Review way back in May 2022, where we started looking at the Evaluation and Appraisal Review. And then there was the year report. In May 2023, we started looking at the amendments that would be required. And we are here at the transmittal hearing. And that transmittal hearing will be followed by a state level review. I think the next slide I have kind of shows you a little bit more of the timeline. And then we'll move on. I extended the timeline to August or so, 2024. Hopefully we'll be back for adoption of these amendments sometime in the June timeframe. Throughout the whole process, the EAR, the EAR and the amendments, we've had ongoing public engagement throughout the process to get citizen and resident feedback. So this slide does show you a little bit more about the, the recent work of the amendments. We had the local planning agency meeting on February 22nd that Jaclyn Jensen will talk about, the results of that. We also had a public meeting last night and drop-in sessions yesterday, and then more drop-in sessions today and council hearing tonight for transmittal. So the drop-in sessions were just an opportunity for people to ask any specific questions about the amendments and the process. And the public meeting was really more of a chance to provide the presentation. So following this, I mentioned the state review. What will happen when we transmit the amendments is the state, for the state required amendments, they have a 60-day window for review. And those that are not required, what we're calling optional, there's a 30-day review. However, to keep the, to keep the process while we're amending the comprehensive plan, we'll bring them back both at the same time so that it's a little easier to manage the, the, the flow and the process. So that's why we're saying to be announced, but hopefully sometime in June, we'll bring those back. I want to talk just briefly about the findings that we developed in the year. And the reason why I talk about those is because they set the stage for these amendments that you, that are before you. So in the year, in 2022 and 2023, we had three, we reviewed every policy, every goal objective of policy in the city. And that is what we called the appendix B. And in appendix B, what we did is we said, for this goal objective or policy, we have no comment. What that meant, what we meant by that was that was likely sufficient to meet the city's goals at this time. Most of the review consisted of no comment. And then we looked at those policies that would require state level as, to be consistent with state statute. We called those state required changes. And then optional changes in that appendix B were those that may need to be changed or may be insufficient to meet the city's goals. Following that, we provided you with a scope of amendments. And in that, in that agreement, we really limited that scope. The first way in that limited that scope was to just amend the plan for the state required, what was state required. In your packet, you'll see that's not a, not a very long list of amendments. And I'll talk about some of the thinking there. But the second goal was to limit any optional amendments to more or less keep ensuring that your plan is as up-to-date as possible. And you'll see in the, in the packet, there's quite a few things that, that needed to be addressed. And we didn't take a, a, a deep dive into any one issue. The goal was to provide a comprehensive plan that's as updated as possible so that members of the public and anyone reading the plan would have a good understanding of what they were looking at. So I want to talk a little bit about the state required amendments first because, like I said, the, the amendments were not lengthy, but there was quite a bit of analysis that was associated with the decisions made. So there's, there's kind of four things that, that ended up needing some thinking in those state required elements. The first was that the state required that cities and counties, where you have agricultural future land use categories, solar facilities were required in agricultural future land use categories. When we looked at that, the analysis came pretty clear. The city of Benita Springs is an urbanized area and you really have no agricultural future land use categories. So there were no changes made to the comprehensive plan to allow solar facilities as a right. The second thing that needed to be addressed was that the state also changed statute to say that floating solar facilities were, we spent a bit of time defining, we talked about what's floating solar. Well, floating solar is solar that, solar facilities that float on water. We provided a couple pictures in the presentation for members of the public to also see what floating solar facilities look like. There's several pilot projects that are happening in the U.S. There's one in Bartow, Florida that we were able to look at. And the, what the state statute required is that floating solar facilities be allowed in appropriate future land use categories in their, in your comprehensive plan. So the question then, what is appropriate? And that was a challenging to really think about. What does that mean for the city? And again, this is a use by right. And what that means is that property owners have the right to, to install floating solar. So that was what the legislation said. As we looked at the details around floating solar, we provided an analysis about the economic feasibility requiring about a two-acre floating array. We looked at some of the environmental considerations. Some of your feedback was to, to address some of those. So we looked at environmental considerations and determined that there really were no appropriate future land use categories where floating solar should be as, approved as a right. Now, that doesn't mean that a property owner could not come and ask for floating solar or solar, but that the existing land development code and land development regulations has a special exception process and a plan development process that could appropriately handle those uses. So we did not make any changes to the comprehensive plan for floating solar facilities to be as approved by right. The other pieces of the state required amendments really were around some changes to approval authority for sewer and then just a, a few minor changes around consistency with state statute. So that was your state required packet. A lot more reading upfront in terms of the analysis that was important to respond to statute and was important to respond to the state, but not a, a good deal of amendments. Now I'll switch to the optional amendments where there were quite a few. The optional amendments, again, it was a limited scope. And in that limited scope, we looked at three broad categories of changes. One is just plan updates. And those plan updates looked at, are there areas that are inconsistent between the comprehensive plan and other county plans? Areas that needed to ensure consistency with city practice? So things change over time in terms of the city practice 10 years ago may have been somewhat different than it is today. And then a good number of changes and amendments were associated with completed actions. So the city's completed a, a number of policies that were in the comprehensive plan. So those amendments are reflected. And then last thing is updating information. So document titles change, the name of agencies change, the name of task forces change. Those were all updated in your amendments. Then the second big bucket was amending priority goals, objectives, and policies. And those were more of an urgent nature, things that the city was facing pretty readily that should be addressed. And then the last portion was rewriting the public participation procedures. And that was important because the public participation procedures referred to the first adoption of the comprehensive plan. It, it was very out of date and, and very inconsistent with, with statute. So that, that rewrite addressed those issues. But I want to note for you and for the public that there was no changes made, no amendments recommended related to density, height restrictions, or the future land use map. So the substantive future land use categories aren't, we're not proposing for any amendment. There are some minor revisions to the packet that you have in front of you, and those are handled in a handout that Mr. Sheffield provided. And those are related to outside council reviewed what's in your packet and didn't get to a few related to the public school facilities. So some of those are reflected in the handout that you have. It's a two-page handout. So these public school facilities, there was an important, they're not substantive changes other than we're reflecting the proper name of the document. Those additional changes we're proposing. I'll also tell you that the school district is currently looking at its plans and how it, it does school assignment. Those are in the process of being adopted, but they're not ready yet and they have not yet been adopted. So we're recommending holding policy 1.4.2 in the public school facilities element, and that's also in this packet. The additional change that when we went over the review with outside council was related to the public participation procedures. And that was wording, just a wording change in order, order of the sentence.
And, and Margaret, just for clarification, outside counsel is, is David Theriak your outside land use attorney?
Okay, yes, thank you. And then the last thing I want to mention is I have notes at the bottom of your, of your, that two-page handout. This is in the process of printing from Word to a PDF. It, it did not appear that on page 11 of your optional amendments, the recommendation is to strike figure, the outdated figure three.
Strike?
Strike outdated figure three. And then we're, in your packet, it is proper that we're adding a new version of that map, which appears on page 12 of your optional amendments. And then the public school facilities maps did not, in the PDF printing, did not get struck. Those appear on page 58 and 59 of your optional amendments. So those were meant to be struck. It's just the technology wasn't working with me apparently to produce an accurate packet. So I believe that's it for me. Oh, just to, just reiterate the public, considerable public input around this process. And I know there are members of the public here tonight who, who may want to speak. And then I also believe that I will turn it over to Jaclyn Jensen to cover the LPA recommendations.
And very quickly, Mr. Mayor, just to point out, since Dr. Bannion covered both of the two proposed ordinances, there will be a second vote after, after the first one, which you have right now as the state mandated to do the, the second ordinance, which is the optional mandated. So her presentation will co, cover both, but I just want to make sure that that was clear.
Can we take that vote now?
After public input, in, in fact, if you want, you can have public input on, on both and then vote on both. But we would, I would ask that Mike read the second ordinance by title before you take that action.
Do we want to hear from Jackie while she's, or no?
Yeah, it's going to take Mike a second to find it anyway.
I'll be very brief. Thank you for the record, Jaclyn Jensen with Community Development. Just wanted to provide you a very brief summary of the local planning agency hearing, which took place on February 22nd. So the LPA ultimately motioned for you to adopt the amendments as presented to the council or to the local planning agency at their meeting, both the state and optional. In discussion with the amendments, we went into a little more detail on the process. If someone did want to go ahead and petition the city to place a solar facility on their private property or floating solar, we just wanted to explain or they had some questions to make sure that there's still an avenue for someone to do that. And by virtue of the amendments that we were adopting, that a private property owner was not precluded from doing so. So we just went over that process a little more in detail. Another item that was discussed was they wanted some more educational background on our existing policies for bonus density and affordable housing. And there is some interest for them to pursue some additional research and analysis on that topic. And we explained that we would work with the city clerk's office and the city attorney's office on what opportunities may be available for them to participate on topics such as that, which kind of dovetails into the discussion you had earlier this evening, if you want to go ahead and evaluate the tools that are in our toolbox already. So I just wanted to go ahead and share with you those discussions that took place at LPA. That's it. Thank you.
I have a question. Do the private people that want, if somebody wanted to put in a solar panel, do they have to have the two acres and the square? You know, because they recommend rectangle and within two miles of, you know, facility that can take the energy or whatever.
So for a private property owner that just wants to put panels on the roofs, nothing's changed?
No, no, not on the roofs, the floating.
Yeah, so floating, so in that instance, we would look at that as a type of essential service function facility. And we, we've looked at those facilities such as solar generation or transfer stations a certain way in our comprehensive plan and through our land use procedures. So it does not preclude someone from petitioning the city to do so.
If, if there's nothing else extra, I have, Mike, please read the, the second ordinance by title and then you can open up public hearing to both ordinances and then just vote one and two.
Hey, Mike, thank you.
This is an ordinance with the City of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the City of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan as adopted by ordinance 2002-16 as amended, adopting optional amendments based on the 2023 Evaluation and Appraisal Review so as to amend the future land use element, transportation element, housing element, infrastructure element, coastal conservation management element, element, recreation and open space element, intergovernmental coordination element, capital improvements element, and public participation monitoring, updating, and evaluation procedures element, public schools, facilities element, and definitions to revise and update the existing goals- to revise and update the existing goals, objectives, and policies and data and analysis in accordance with chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing a conflicts clause and a sufferability clause, and providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
With that, attorney, public comment. Not all wants orderly lines, please.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment, especially for the people that are here this evening, folks that on TV. You should know that every single member of this council met individually on their own time with Dr. Banyan and our city staff to go over this. So when you see it being quiet up here, a lot of nodding, we've already reviewed this. So this is really more for your edification than anything else.
Do we vote on each one separately?
Yes, please. So the first ordinance would be the state mandated.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz. Councilmember Purdon. Councilmember Carr. Mayor Steinmeier. Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
May I make a motion for a second?
For the optional?
Is there a second? Mayor's motion?
Let me second. We may have a public comment.
Oh, we do? Okay. Just please identify yourself.
Thanks. Barbara Ryan here in Benita Springs. And first of all, thank you very much and thanks for the presentation on the comprehensive plan. I guess maybe there are two comments that I would have and it's more, maybe not in terms of the regulations or your requirements right now for submitting it back to the state, but future action that the council may take based on this. And one is around the fact that there's no agricultural future land use planned in the city, which sounds kind of ironic. So that kind of surprised, I think, a lot of people because we'll go around and see agricultural being used. So that was maybe an inconsistency that we have. And I think what I felt anyway is that if there was no future land use planned for the city, that was already restricting what solar could be developed. Not so much on private land, because people can apply for those solar facilities on their own land, but on city-owned property. So whether it was vacant land or unused land, would the city not consider solar because of this comprehensive plan? That's one comment. And then the second one was around the floating solar. I think there were a lot of comments on this plan about the unintended consequences on the aquatic life or on reduced sunlight into those water bodies. And so I guess we just wanted, I wanted to elevate that issue to you as well in terms of approving future floating solar on individual land, whether it was city-owned land or whether it was private-owned land. I think those are the two.
Thanks for your comments.
That I'd like to get on the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up to that because I also was thinking about those issues. And the state is telling us we have to do this, but what, well, and I actually, Dr. Banyan will be there. I said, well, it's made in the USA, produced in the USA, and assembled in the USA, right? Oh, no, we have no say in that. So China can put in these huge panels and to do what? To our land, to our water? I mean, we don't know what can happen. There needs to be, at the very end of your report, there are all these kind of openings of where solar can come in and more study needs to be done. And we don't know what's going to happen to the water quality, to the soil quality, to the health quality of the neighborhoods. But we might go there and I'm kind of like that tightened up. And I know the governor, but then does the governor pay for it? You know, if he dictates we have to do it? No. So just pointing out, I concur. Questions and concerns.
Do we have a motion on the table?
Yes, we do.
And a second?
Councilmember Bogaz. Councilmember Purdon. Councilmember Carr. Mayor Steinmeier. Councilmember Corey. Councilmember Folic. Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
And with that, just to let you, remind you, you will not hear the second reading on this for several months as it's transmitted to the state, so probably in about four months you'll get it back. And then you'll have an adoption hearing.
Okay, now I guess we're down to 10 city attorneys.
I have no items.
You don't have any choice?
I don't have any. I, just goodbye to Ms. Sance of Reno who's.
Oh, Carly's leaving us. Does everyone know?
She'll do very well at Collier County.
Okay, Arlene, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just an update we received from communication from Lee County that we were under the understanding they were going to be appointing the CDBGDR members yesterday. They are waiting now until March 19th and we received a revised planning schedule for their meetings coming up. So we understand that all the, they were waiting for some of the municipalities to submit so everyone can be approved at the same time. The other announcements I have is regarding Goodwin Street. We received word from our lobbyists that we are in both the House and Senate budget for 1.3 million for Goodwin Street. We are in the House and Senate budget for Rosemary for 1.4 million. US 41 Benetia Beach Road intersection, which primarily is the FDOT project, is in for 5 million in both budgets. And the Benetia Beach Road improvements, if you recall, that is one that's being coordinated through Lee County staff. County manager and I had several discussions about that. We'll continue to have those. That's in both budgets for 2 million. At this point now, we just wait on the governor's signature of the budget. And so congratulations to the council for your hard work and pursuing our local delegation and keeping them interested in the needs of Benita Springs. So we appreciate your help.
Five million for 41?
Yes, sir.
And the top of the 11 million that we talked about?
Yeah, I heard, I've heard two updates. The published one, I think, had the 5 million, but I've also heard 11 million. So we'll confirm all that, we'll confirm those. But all of those items are in, within the budget.
Very good, very good. We'll do something.
And the last is the, on that FDOT, we'll be having a workshop on March 26th at the Benetia Springs Recreation Center. You can be there in person, but they also have a live online option as well to participate. And this would be the time to give your feedback as well to, regarding that intersection, it's important for participation as well during that process.
Okay, very good. Anything else? That's it?
That's it.
Okay, Fred, you got anything for us tonight? I think we're up to you.
Yeah, well, I just want to say, I was privileged to go up to Tallahassee with four other council people and everybody did a good job. It was great that we had Jesse with us because he got a couple of doors open. We might not have been open ourselves. And we got the job done because when we got there, we were in bad shape. So we took a bad shape and turned it in to get what we needed. Yeah.
What does, what in bad shape mean?
Bad shape mean we weren't going to get much money. And that's not what we came up with. But if we hadn't been there, we wouldn't have got any money. Because we wouldn't have known about it for too late.
Yes, sir. So dovetail off of what Fred just said. I think it's appropriate to thank again Senator Passadomo and our state representative, Adam Botana, and Senator Martin because again, it was with their assistance. And I think we were all pleasantly surprised when Arlene called us to let us know that we got pretty much what we asked for on both of those. And they're very important projects to our community. Mr. Mayor, you asked me at our last meeting about the TDC money, the $66 million. So the bad news is that 66 million was from two years ago. The new budget is actually 42 million, of which 27% goes to beach renourishment and beach works. So of that money, 27% of it goes strictly to the beaches on top of what else is being spent.
How much goes to advertising as well?
52% of that money goes to marketing, advertising, promotions. Some of that money actually comes directly back to Benita Springs. And there is a huge list on their website of events that they support here in Benita. So a lot of the public events that we have, that money comes back. The folks at Arts Benita got 18,000 for their scholarship programs, et cetera. So the money does come back in many ways. And I can assure you, none of our hoteliers are unhappy about the money that's being spent. It's being spent well.
I was going to say the total budget was 42 million.
42 million, yes, sir.
42 million.
42 million, not the 66. The 66 was from two years ago. And because of the storm, obviously, the budget was reduced.
More than half of that goes for advertising.
52%, which is what they put it together for, to advertise our county, our communities, and what we do.
Resiliency. We're back.
Not yet, we're not.
There you go. More for us, or Nigel?
No, sir. Just would recommend that people attend these meetings. I was going to ask Dr. Banyan, how many folks appeared at the drop-ins? Five. Folks, come out to these meetings. It's where you can educate yourselves. Please don't come back to us after the fact and say, why did this all happen? We're trying to let you know about it and do the best we can.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt here with, you talked about volunteering to paint people's houses some time ago?
Paint your heart out.
Paint your heart out.
Yes, sir.
Well, I talked to this owner here. It's a family business. He's in Benita. He's got paint up the yin yang he wants to give to you.
I know this gentleman.
You know him?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Real nice.
Thank you.
I talked to him about what your idea was and he said, oh, let him get a hold of me. I keep forgetting to talk to you.
Great reminder from the mayor. I'm looking for each council member to give Arlene one name of somebody in their district that is on limited resources, whose home needs a good freshing up. And that's what some folks that started out in Benita Bay years ago. It's called Paint Your Heart Out. And I see some folks in the audience that actually helped with that. Not you, Mr. Dolmer. I don't think you carry a paintbrush. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Okay, Chris, you got something for us?
Yeah, thank you. I was late in terms of submitting a green sheet last week. So I talked to Arlene and she suggested I bring it up here at the council members' comments. And it has to do with accessory dwelling units. And looking around at the market value of apartments that are operating in Benita Springs and are under construction. Over the years, we have built out most of the available land in Benita Springs. And so if we were trying to come up with a plan for workplace housing, we sort of run out of that land. And there's a number of people north of Shangri-La in my district that have rather large lots that are interested in accessory dwelling units. Now, accessory dwelling units are typically done for a number of reasons. One, obviously for income. Two, for family members that need housing. Three, as a safety measure for older people that would like somebody younger on the property. And maybe they do exchanges of work, for example, maintaining of landscaping, mowing the grass, you know, fixing the gutters on the house, whatever, in exchange for rent. And then there's also just a demand on the part of people that are living in poorer housing or that's not been well maintained to have a better place to live. So what I've done is to look around at what's going on in other parts of the country. Have had some conversations with John. And it's generally, there's nothing that precludes accessory dwelling units under state law. Obviously, the HOAs, the gated communities have.
What's an accessory dwelling?
Accessory dwelling unit is.
What is what?
Well, it's like a small, say, 800-square-foot building on your property that could be used to house people. It could be an addition onto your home.
Another housing unit?
Yes, another housing unit.
Not a garage or?
Didn't we used to call them mother-in-law suites?
Yeah, you could call them mother-in-law suites. Some people might be.
Separate the mother-in-law. Yeah, that's a good idea.
So anyway, I'm not asking for anything other than for community development to take a look at, if there's anything within our land development code or the ordinances that are problematic for the development of these. John and I have talked that for people that want to build them and are looking for rental income, it's very difficult under our code to do that and be, make it economically feasible. I'm not saying that all ADUs are built for that. But I'm just wanting to have community development come back with a report as to what exists within our code, what some of the other communities in Florida are doing. And you know, part of the resiliency plan was to develop live local, work local. Because we needed to keep people close to where they work, trying to get some of the traffic off the highways and so forth. So I'd just like to ask your indulgence that they be allowed to come forward with a report at some future date so that we can discuss this.
Jamie, how are things?
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion, but we just need general direction from staff if you're.
Does anybody object to that?
We bring back information.
I don't object to it. I would just say, I want to carefully look at and understand it because as Chris insinuated, this isn't going to affect the gated community. So that means it's going to be two and five essentially where this is going to happen. And I'm not opposed to it. I just want to see what it looks like and fully understand it.
It's also in four.
Okay.
Because north of Shangri-La.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, big lots up there that people could use.
So I'm open to, no objection. I just want to fully.
That's fair.
So I'll second if you need a motion.
I think we see a general consensus.
We got direction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jamie.
I also just want to thank Senator Passadoma, Senator Martin, and Representative Botana for their continued support for Benita Springs. And you know, the council, we went up there and I've been able to go up the last two years. And we went up there and didn't have what we had hoped and were able to come back in the last two years and very successful results. So pretty exciting, pretty exciting news with that.
Thank you for your efforts. Hey, Jesse?
Yeah, the tally, you know, the tally thing is very exciting for all of us. You know, we got up there and we were a little demoralized in the beginning. We thought we had three projects all going and we got there and we found out we had half of a one. So that was not very exciting for us to learn. But you know, our legislative team up there, from Adam to John to Kathleen, have all really, they kicked it in and they found money and they made it work. And you know, I would just also say, you know, the Greenberg Truck team, I mean, has been really good because, and they've been, you know, I'll call them off-hours. I'll be getting my steps in around the neighborhood and I'll be calling them. They answer, you know, and they give you updates and they tell you who needs to be poked. And if you think about it, when we decided to change lobbyists two years ago, everybody's like, well, we've had the same one forever and I don't know how this will work. If you look at the ROI, just these last two years, you're talking $8 million. How much do we pay them? Under 50, I believe. So I mean, I think the ROI on them has been pretty good. So I'm impressed with their ability to help us make something out of nothing and really, you know, deliver for the last two years where prior to that, that wasn't exactly what we were getting for our investment. So shout out to them for that. And then, you know, honestly, the team, you all, you know, Chris, Jamie, Fred, Nigel, I mean, we all up there. It's a long, long trip. It's a long day. It's a lot of, it's a lot of work. And you know, if you guys didn't come, I don't think it would have happened the way it did. It wouldn't have gotten over the finish line. So you know, I'm just really pleased that we were able to get it done. Number two, Wonder Girdens. I'll keep it brief on that. As you guys know, you know, we had initial agreement, we thought, we sent it. And then they sent us back something that was not appropriate. they sent us back something that was not, not appropriate. And essentially, we, I, I told them we needed to have another meeting, because we were walking, we were going around in circles, and we needed to get to a better place, and the starting document was the last offer that we sent them, and then we worked from there. So without getting into too much detail, let's just say that the things that specifically you would probably be upset about, like them putting the, the right to buy, right to purchase back in there, that's back out of there, right? Okay, the insurance stuff, that's back in there. There will be rent, and there will be a larger financial investment for them over the term of the 10-year lease that I think you guys will be pleased to see. So they are going to come to the table, and I think that, you know, as we develop rapport under the new leadership over there, I think the relationship is going to get right where it needs to be. I think Wendy's great, I think the new executive director really has a heart for that place, and he's, they're ready to make a deal. They're, I mean, they're, it's, how hard is it for them to fundraise right now? You know, everything's in limbo. We don't want it in limbo any more than them. And the right to purchase came out, not because anything about them, but, you know, it's not for sale for anybody, is what I told them. It's not for sale for anyone. So I think we're close. So I try, I wanted it to be next meeting, depending on, we left the meeting with a, you know, with what feels like an agreement on both sides. Obviously, they have to give the written documents to their board, the same as you guys have to get it. But assuming there are no landmines on either side of that, we walked away, we had six hour, on Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday, staff was here, they did a great job. Literally, we did three hours, then we took a break, and then we did another two and a half, three hours. So it was an all-day thing, and we went line by line through the entire contract. So I think you guys will be pleased when you see it. So, and then last but not least, I know there is a limited window of availability for us to do it as a city, but if you all recall, when Councilman Gibson was actually up here, I asked for him to be recognized at the League of Cities for Lifetime Achievement Award. And there's somebody else in the council that I'd like to nominate, because, you know, Fred has, for over a decade of service to southwest Florida, he was a fire commissioner before he was on council. And if you watch, if you're one of the few people who often watch the meetings, you won't see Fred and I disagree very often. And generally, if we do disagree, it's because he's carrying water for the League of Cities, and I don't agree with him. That's the only time we ever disagree. So Fred has simultaneously been a great, great steward of League of Cities policies for the duration of his time up here, and simultaneously been a great advocate for the city. And just being up in tally, you know, we're driving home, and I'm thinking that, you know, we don't get to do this again. And you've been so great, you know, you've been somebody I've learned a lot from, and I think you've done really good service to both the city and the league. So I'd like, you know, I'd like to ask staff if you would be supportive in me putting Fred up for the Lifetime Achievement Award for the League of Cities.
Absolutely, yes.
So Councilmember Purdon, you actually have to do that in a form of a motion, and you have to have a second, and the both of the...
Second.
The nominator and the second will have a signature on the, on the award.
I would like to nominate Fred Forbes for the Lifetime Achievement Award for the League of Cities.
Second? Absolutely.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Boges.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, very good. You're on deck, young lady.
Thank you. And Fred, congratulations on, you, you also go above and beyond to every single meeting that has to deal with traveling on a Friday morning at 8:00 AM, or, you, you are amazing that you just, you're there and you're prepared, and it's wonderful. So hopefully, it moves forward. I know, it's been a very busy, crazy week, but I did do a historic walk, which I did with John Pano once before, but I did one this weekend in the art show, which was fabulous downtown, I don't know if everybody got to see it. But there, it was packed, and it was wonderful. And what's so wonderful is that when they leave, it's not like we have to go clean up. The civic nature of Benita is beautiful. And so this historic work, and I must say, Derek Botana knows his plants. He can identify every plant. And then we went over to Shangri-La, and he knew more than the people there. And so it was a fun, interesting walk. It's always great to learn new stuff, and, you know, sort of, how many, how many statues are on Shangri-La's property? They do that with the little kids, and they have to go find them. But anyway, I'm sorry. It was, it was interesting, and a good, good week. That's all.
That's it? That's it? Okay. I think you all said whatever you wanted to say, and I think, public comment, please.
Yep.
Hi, my name is Wendy Rocha, and I live in a little condominium complex over on Maddox Lane, it's called Gulf Villas of Benita Springs. And right around where we are, there's a lot of development by Polte Homes. And just abutting us to the north, they have put in a big retention pond. And along the edge of that pond, there are many live oak trees. So in August, two members of their crew, Drew Riser, who's their land manager, and Christina Johnson from KMJ Land Consultant, did a walkthrough along the lines of our property to tell us what they were going to do. And they told us that they would be taking down many trees, and that all of the trees along the property line were marked with pink ribbons. And they said that any of those trees that may be damaged, they would remove. So we hesitated about that, and we brought in Joshua Tree Incorporated to see...
Could you repeat that? Repeat what they said about these trees are going to do what?
They would remove any tree that they damaged that was no longer viable along the property.
Trees on their property?
Some are right on the property line, four of them, and two of them are about a foot in on our property line.
Oh, we've got a city attorney here.
No, no, we're not, we're public comment, public comment.
Okay.
Public comment.
So anyway, they said that if they were damaged and no longer viable, they would take them down. So we hesitated about taking live trees down, so we asked Joshua Tree Company to come in, and they had an arborist come in after the digging was done. And they told us that they had severely damaged the roots of all six trees, and then they backfilled them, and then they said that they were going to cut down any branches that went over the property line, and that the chances of those trees living were slim, and it would severely reduce their life expectancy. So based on that report, and I have a handout that I can show you, we decided as a board to vote, to allow them to take down the trees. So now the trees are dying, and we sent them a letter saying, "We would like you to take down the trees," but we're getting no responses. We filed for permits to have the trees taken down, and we were told by Laura Gibson, Gibson?
Yes.
From your office?
Yes.
That we needed to, on the permit, we needed to get the name of the contractor that they would have that would take down the trees. And from that point on, we've gotten very little response from Polte Construction Company. And we've gone back to them a number of times, and we've asked them to please take down the tree or tell us what to do, and we've gotten nothing from them. So what we're doing is seeking your advice and your guidance as to where we should go here. The price that Joshua Tree gave us was more money than our little 60-unit condo complex could handle, and we kind of think Polte Construction probably can afford it better than we can. And also, we understand that this particular property with the retention pond is going to be turned over to the city of Benita Springs. So those dead trees are going to be now your property. So we thought you might want to give us some guidance as to where we should go next, or if there's any way that you can help our little community deal with this dying tree problem. And that's it.
If I'll get her contact information and follow-up afterwards.
Thank you. Okay. All right, great.
Yeah, city attorney here.
Yeah, just give us one...
Derek Rooney, he's going to work with you.
Thank you so much for hearing me out.
How big are these trees? Are they big?
Yeah, considerably.
I mean, 20 inches, I mean, are they heritage trees?
Mr. Mayor, don't get any ideas that you're going to go cut down trees.
They're big.
I'm asking whether they're heritage trees or not.
They're live oaks.
How big are they?
They're 100 feet.
Public comment.
Yeah.
At four and a half feet, how...
Probably three feet around, some of them.
Well, you're talking, the tree advisory board, you're not allowed to take down...
Public comment.
Okay, so I'll leave my name, and I'll leave...
Shut up, please. Be quiet, please.
I'll leave the handout so you can actually see the trees.
Okay.
If you'd like to leave that with me, that'd be...
I will.
We have a tree advisory board to try and protect heritage trees that are so big. Now, if these, if they've been damaged by this contractor, he hasn't applied to do the work without, with these trees. He had, we, we have an ordinance to protect these heritage trees, so...
Mr. Mayor.
It's more complicated, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I think Derek is all over that part. So he will, he will, and make sure he sees the pictures and understands what the mayor's talking about.
Thank you.
But, okay, so we can, I think that's...
And we're going to try and help you out, honey.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more public comment? Anything else for the good of the city? We're adjourned.